Neely is on business out of town. So, um, I'd like to ask our city recorder to call the roll tonight.
Commissioner Mumm.
Hello.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
And Mayor Neely.
Hi.
Commissioner President James Nacita.
Here, and as folks can hear, we have two of our members.
My computer's not coming very clear.
As we can hear, two of our members are visiting us by, uh, or participating in the meeting by telephone. So will you all please join me in the flag book?
A pledge of allegiance to the land, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. For one thing, I'm going to draw individual to the review of this document.
Okay. Um, tonight, we have a proclamation, um, and I'm very appreciative of the timing on this particular proclamation, and I get the honor to read it, um, for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. Um, and the reason I say that is I am myself a cancer survivor. So being able to do this and appreciating the work of this group is, uh, is very important to me. So I'm going to read it. It says, "Proclamation, American Cancer Society Relay for Life proclamation. Whereas Relay for Life is the signature activity of the American Cancer Society, and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembered loved ones lost to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life, Oregon City supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cures for cancer and by fighting back. And whereas Relay for Life helped fund more than $150 million in cancer research last year, now therefore, I, James Nacita, Commissioned President of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim the week of June 9th, June 19th to June 26th as Relay for Life Week, and encourage citizens to participate in the Relay for Life event at Clackamas Community College on June 25th and June 26th. Um, and in witness whereof, I have here on to set my hands this 15th day of June 2011. And, uh, I think we have, uh, some folks from Relay for Life here, and I'd like to invite them up to, uh, take the proclamation. Thank you both very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, with that, we have citizens' comments. And, um, uh, folks are typically familiar, or you're interested in commenting on something that is not on the regular agenda. You can fill out a card and, uh, give it to our city recorder. And I have two folks, uh, first Patty Brown and William Gifford.
I'm assuming this mic is on. Uh, I am here this evening, I'm Patty Brown, and I'm a resident of Oregon City, have been for a lot of years now. And this evening, I'm, because I'm active in the community in a number of different areas here, I'm here tonight to talk about the history people. I happen to be on the board of the Clackamas County Historical Society, and we have two museums here in Oregon City that are open. Both the Museum of the Oregon Territory and the Stevens Crawford House. The items, the Museum of the Territory, I sent a flyer out, and I'm sorry, I was a little short, for people to show them what we have coming up for the summer. And what I want to comment on is because I heard today, uh, some gossip that was going around, and of course, I always listen. And, uh, they were talking about that there was some interest in probably going back and reviewing the trolley situation again and talking about that. Well, I won't, I'm asking the commission to be more, uh, foresight, more foresight in what they do. We have planned our summer events, and our fall events are all, they're not published yet, but they are pretty well locked in for speakers coming and events going on at the museum that we're desperately trying to get back open because, as you know, the funding for the start sizes is poor, it's almost nonexistent. And we're trying to keep it open, we're trying, we're open on Rensies and, uh, the first and third Saturday of every week. And everything was put together and planned, uh, because we are going to have speakers and because we are going to have minutes of, uh, history, uh, moments in history, and people dressed in Korean clothing and things. We're, we're, we took our time to roll around the trolley runs so that we would be included. And I know that we're not the only venue that's seeing that. The venues are working together, and, uh, the, uh, several of them are working very closely together to, uh, make history important in Oregon City again, to be under everybody's eye. I know a lot of you are supporters, but the money isn't there, and I appreciate that. But I don't want you to pull the rug out from other areas where we rely on without any notice or without any communication coming ahead of time. That kind of a change should be made at least a year in advance, or even the discussion on it held at that time, not while we're, we've been planned and ready to go for months now. And so please, uh, take it, you know, to heart and, uh, give us, give us a chance. We're, we don't get, uh, assistance from the city. We've been blessed with a few grants that came from entities in the, uh, community or in the political arena, and, uh, we're appreciative of those. But we, we are really trying really hard to get open full-time. So keep us in mind, enjoy the flyer. We're putting out posters in every place that we can think of to get people to come down and visit us.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Smith. Thank you for speaking.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. As you know, for the last couple more years, uh, we have been, a number of us have been working diligently at reactivating neighborhood associations. Um, one that we've been having particularly awkward time with has been Gapton Lane. We've had a couple of reactivation meetings, and as of yet, we have not had anyone step up to be responsible for helping, uh, that, uh, the leadership in that neighborhood association, but we're not giving up. But tonight, it gives me great pleasure to mention that we have reactivated the 12th Neighborhood Association. Last was, I was one of the first, Tower Vista Neighborhood Association. Last week, um, we had, um, a meeting out at, uh, through the courtesy of, uh, of Kevin Yell at the Amesworth, uh, house. We had the, uh, we had the pleasure of having our first reactivation meeting for Tower Vista. We had a couple of dozen people show up. Um, we had guest speakers of, uh, of, um, John Lewis, speaking specifically their concern was the, uh, was, uh, Leland Road construction project. And we had, and he did a very fine job of answering a lot of other questions besides that. And, uh, representatives in the police department, a lot of conversation, and, um, and we got a couple of volunteers, and that's the important thing. And I wanted to announce, of course, now it's gone dark, just a second. Uh, I wanted to announce that we, we have, um, co-chairs, uh, two gentlemen by the name of Scott Young and Steve Lamb, who will be the co-chairs for the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association. And, and Irene Young, uh, wife of Scott Young, will, will serve as secretary. And so we have two secretaries, we have, uh, we have adopted the, uh, the prototype bylaws as working bylaws that we will review and, uh, and work on. I want to give special thanks to Chris Taylor, who has worked so hard to, uh, to get these neighborhoods active back up again. Uh, her and, uh, and Betty Mumm and, uh, and Damon Navy, and there have been, uh, there's been a core of very hardworking people getting these neighborhoods back together again. And, uh, they're not all quite finished, but they are coming along swimmingly, and, uh, it's a lot of work, and I just want to say thank you very much for, uh, for this council's support in the neighborhood associations and, uh, and welcome Tower Vista aboard.
I have a question on that. Where does the name come from, Tower, what tower are they viewing in Tower Vista?
Historically, I don't know. Boynton Tower, I suspect, the Water Tower. No, I don't think it would be a microwave tower because it's a pretty old name. It's just Water Tower.
It has.
Oh, well, I guess it could have been a little more creative for us. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you both for speaking. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak before we move on to the regular agenda? Okay, well, let's move down to, um, adoption of the agenda. Um, may I request a motion to adopt the agenda? Don't need a motion. Okay. I will move there for to, item number six of the, of the public hearing, and that's, um, I'm sorry, item number six is public hearing, and we have one tonight. Um, item A is LE 10 dash two, Water Master Plan, and, um, we have a commission report, and that is from, let me get this to work. Mr. Conklin?
Thank you. Um, so tonight, we'll be presenting legislative file 10 dash zero two, the Water Master Plan, and we are requesting a continuance. Uh, the Public Works Director and the Finance Director are still reviewing the documents for funding implications associated with this, uh, Water Master Plan update. Uh, this file also needs to go before the Planning Commission, which will make a recommendation to the City Commission, and those hearings have also been continued to a date certain. So we are requesting that tonight's public hearing, uh, you take testimony from a citizen that wishes to testify tonight, and, um, continue the hearing with the record open to September 21st, 2011. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, so, um, in my newbie role as presiding officer, I think I'll have to ask for some guidance here. Um, since there is a request for continuance on the part of the staff, do we nevertheless open the public hearing?
You can, and typically, we recommend that just in case somebody came because they saw it on the agenda and wanted to provide information, and it may not happen.
Okay. Okay. Then I will open the public hearing on LE 10 dash two, Water Master Plan. Is there any citizen who would like to speak on this item? Okay, then with that, I will close the public hearing. And we will, Commissioner Smith, you have a question?
Oh.
Um, thank you, Mayor, um, gosh, Commissioner, Commissioner President and commissioners. The, um, I wanted to just elaborate. I wanted to just elaborate very, elaborate very briefly. Um, one of the reasons why we're taking a special look at the finance plan for the Water Master Plan is because of its timing with the, uh, possible water rate rollback that is, um, going to happen in 2014, and that's within the time limits of this master plan. And so we are, um, originally, those consultants just prepared it like you would any old master plan where you're assuming a certain water rate is going to continue. And so we're asking what David Wimmer and I have decided to sit down with them and really look at two scenarios so we have a much better understanding of what, how, what are the, what do we need to understand about the water rates if they would were to remain the same or if they were to roll back? So that's taking a bit of time, and as you also know, there's so many other things going on right now that that's had to take a little bit of a back burner, but that's the reason why it's, uh, we're asking for the continuance, and we'll get back to you soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Smith had something?
Uh, no, but do we need a motion?
Okay.
I move to continue the public hearing for file LE dash 10 dash zero two, to date certain of September 21st, 2011.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioners Rock and Mumm. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Rock.
Hi.
And Mayor Neely.
Hi.
Okay. We'll move the next to item, to general business. Item number A is construction contract agreement for the Kanema Neighborhood Associate, uh, Kanema Neighborhood Park Project in the amount of $323,650. And Mr. Rocker has a report for us.
Thank you, uh, good evening commissioners. This is, uh, I think, a, uh, fun item, hopefully, for you to take action on. Um, uh, presenting to you tonight, uh, the construction contract, uh, and, uh, bid award, uh, for the Kanema Neighborhood Park Project. Uh, we opened bids on May 31st, and we received eight bids. Uh, bidding was favorable as it's, uh, seems to, seems to be in, in, uh, recent times with the, uh, construction market being what it is. Uh, so we received, uh, what I think is a very favorable low bid. Um, Brand Construction is the low bidder. Uh, I provided junior commission recorded, um, an attached bid, uh, results list with all of those amounts. Um, the base bid, uh, total was $261,000 from Brand Construction. However, what we're asking you to award is a total amount of $323,650. And the reason for that request is that we also had an item, uh, in our bid, uh, proposals for the contractors to submit an add alternate, which means it's a, uh, an additional item that they can, that they would bid on, that we would consider awarding, but we're basing, the bid award is based on, on the low bid being on the, on the lump sum cost. And the, uh, al- alternate item was for a restroom, uh, to be built. Uh, this was an item that was not originally included in our, um, uh, initial project budget. Um, however, after some, uh, recent, we went through the process, uh, this, this last fall of kind of revisiting the master plan and, and going over those, uh, construction plans with the neighborhood, uh, we had a very, some very active conversations, some good conversations. Uh, we made some modifications to the, to the plans based on input. But one of the things that we heard from the neighborhood was, um, they would really like to see a restroom in the project, and we weren't certain that we'd be able to afford to do that, so we did it as an alternate item. Uh, then based on the, the favorable bidding, uh, within, within our budget that we've got available, uh, we are able to also add the, um, the restroom item into the project. So, so that's the, the total, uh, construction, uh, contract price, uh, being what it is. Um, as you know, just as kind of a refresher, we were awarded, uh, last year, a local government grant for this project from Oregon State Parks and Recreation in the amount of $253,900. Uh, that, uh, is being matched by the city in an equal amount from our parks, uh, development fund, which is mostly our SDCs. And so we're anticipating a total project of about $507,000, $508,000. Um, this amount, um, uh, does not include, uh, some additional items that will be added later. We'll be bringing back at some point a, uh, a contract to be awarded for the, um, for the playground costs. Those are going to be done under a separate contract as a separate item. The reason being, one, we can get favorable prices through our, uh, um, state cooperative contracts to buy playground equipment, but also, uh, more importantly, we're doing that as a, um, a volunteer, uh, project with the neighborhood association. So that will be, um, a community-built, uh, playground, and we'll be purchasing the equipment separately and installing that as a kind of a separate component to, to this contract. So with that, my recommendation is to award the contract that's in front of you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Is there any citizen that would like to speak on this agenda item? See, Mr. Edgar?
Commissioner, while, uh, this, while Mr. Edgar's going forward, uh, one thing I forgot to mention is the time of, the expected time of completion, uh, would be this fall. Or if we award the contract tonight, uh, we'll give notice to proceed immediately. We should be under construction within a few weeks, and we're, we're on the timeline that we had originally anticipated, and so we, we hope to have a completed park by, uh, by this fall.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Paul Edgar, representing the Kanema Neighborhood Association and the resident of Oregon City. The Kanema Neighborhood Association's thrilled with the idea that we're going to finally get something going. The, and recommend to you that, uh, that it be passed. Uh, we hope that in the aggregate of the $184,000 difference, that, uh, not only, uh, we had playground equipment and many other items that we, and we were happily working with Scott and the team to try to, uh, identify what was mandatory, you might say, what we really needed, and what we could maybe put off or not select, uh, out of this. And so we, we worked hard, and Scott was an excellent broker as well as the, uh, consultant that was brought in, so I think it went well. Yet at the same time, we get down at the end, when we start going through all of the final $184,000, I would like to bring to the attention that we have still a cyclone fence. Uh, Co- 17, Oregon City Code 1740 spells out that in the Kanema Neighborhood, uh, it's not acceptable to have cyclone fences, metal fences. So here we have a, in the National Registered Historic District of Kanema, a cyclone fence around what is going to be a showplace park, maybe one of the nicest parks for children, if it all comes together like we think it will be. This could be the best park maybe in the state of Oregon. And so if we paint this beautiful picture of this great, beautiful park, it's not a big park, but it's going to be well-designed. And then all of a sudden, you say we put this ugly old frame around it, which is a cyclone fence that's really broken down. It's damaged, needs to be repaired. And in the world of trying to do some of this stuff, it would be much like what you face when you were fixing the, uh, wall, uh, on the, the culminate, or what, and you replace benches and, uh, different things to make it look appropriate. Well, I would like really seriously have you entertain, uh, looking at, uh, the overall appearance because if we're starting to parade a lot of people, just not just the citizens of Kanema and citizens of Oregon City into this, and they start saying, hey, this is really state-of-the-art, and we have this not very impressive fence, uh, it's countered. So I would only hope that if there is some funds left over, that this is one of those areas that we can work with Scott on, but have no idea what we could do, but it's something that needs to be thought out at breath, and, and I would like it to be an open item of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar. Commissioner Smith? Um, Paul, why don't you, um, hold on for a second?
Um, question for staff, I think. Um, I went up there today, actually, just to look at the fence. Um, was the fence repaired in the last? It's, it's been repaired. Um, I, in my memory, it looked, in my memory of being up there, it was, you know, completely collapsing, dented, falling down. Now it looks like it's been completely fixed. Um, some pieces of some spec, uh, some, um, fence sections have been cut out and replaced, and various things like that. And I, I guess the reason that concerns me is because it's probably an issue that's been brought up by the citizens in town meetings, especially from Mr. Edgar about the, the fence. Um, if the fence was removed and we had to put a new fence, then we'd be required to put something in different than a cyclone fence, but what we've done is gone up there and fixed it, um, so that it's not a problem, um, but I don't know how much of it was replaced and how much of it was changed. Um, and I, I'm, I am concerned about how, um, we as a city are consistent with what we expect other people to do, um, how we expect other people to take care of the historic buildings, and we don't, um, how we, um, you know, expect, um, you know, um, citizens to take care of the sidewalks and all those kind of things, and, and we as a city have to follow that same rule. Um, so if we just, I, I don't know, do you know that it was fixed or when it was fixed, or?
I don't, I don't believe it's been, that's been done recently. Um, at least not very recently. I, if, if it was done, uh, it would, it would be just.
If it doesn't, that's bad, honestly, right now. So I'm trying to figure out if it was, if it, because in my memory, it was a lot worse than it is right now, and it looks like it's been repaired, but I don't know.
Not, not very recently. I, I don't, I'll have to, I'll have to check with, with our maintenance, uh, folks and, and see if they, if they replace, if they replace some, uh, sections or something, because they, maybe they were collapsed or something, but that might have just been a safety issue, but I don't, I would probably have been made aware of that, and I don't recall having been made aware of that. So if it's been done, it certainly hasn't been done in, in the very recent times, so.
Yeah, the only, um, the, there's, um, I mean, I remember, you know, fence sections and essential sections gone, um, but now it looks like the fence is pretty intact all the way through, um, till the end fence post, which is, which is not connected. Um, but you can see just in, in the main line at the top of the fence that sections of pipe have been cut out and replaced with new sections, and, um, I don't know how long ago, but I guess, I just want to know that because I'd be concerned if that was done. I mean, that fence has been left like that for decades, and now, now all of a sudden, when people are asking, well, do we have extra money to fix the fence? And now all of a sudden it's fixed, um, instead of actually pulling it out and fix, and redoing it. Um, that's going to be a really concern to me.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm sure that wouldn't have been any, there would have been no, no intent like that whatsoever.
Is there a way, um, I'm just saying, because, you know, if the fence is removed, then we'll have to put it back, we'll have to put something back that fits the guidelines for that neighborhood, but, um, is there something that can be done? I'm thinking along the lines of, um, you know, some of the fencing down on Main Street, I mean, painting it black or doing something to minimize its impact or, you know, visually, um, so that when, because I, I think, um, Mr. Edgar's right, and we did the, when we did the promenade, we were, we were very concerned that we were spending tons of money, uh, well, um, we were spending, um, we had, um, um, American Recovery Act money, and we had, um, to, to replace the promenade or to, 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 to restore the promenade. And so there was definitely a change in, in making that look better. And then we got talking, um, at our TAP meeting a couple of years ago, where we were like, hey, we're going to have the money to make the promenade beautiful, but it's still going to have really horrible-looking benches and really horrible, um, garbage cans. And so we said, that's not going to happen. We're going to replace those, and so we used the TAP money to do that, and then also the signs were replaced too, so that when it was done, it was done. And so I think the concern about this park definitely is, when it's done, it should be done, and it should, and it should look done, and it should look good all the way through and not have one piece that's just kind of been left for, for later. So is there any way to kind of minimize the impact of the fence the way that it looks, if we can, without tearing it out, replacing it? Maybe that's, maybe that's a good solution, I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll definitely, uh, look into that. The, uh, the cost savings that we have, uh, within the budget, um, were, uh, the, the bid were, were, were much lower than expected. So when we, when we set out to include things or not include things in the budget package, it was based on, you know, it's basically with our, um, our park designer, um, consultant doing their, their best analysis of, of the bid, what the bid cost may be or what the item costs may be, and as, um, Paul alluded to, we had to do some kind of, let's discuss which things you'd like to leave in or take out if we had to pull some things out. So now that we've got the bids, and, and once we get the contract awarded, we'll know what our, we'll know what our budget difference still is, which we're in, you know, in a very favorable position. We can, we can go forward and look.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah. This is great.
Kind of unusual, uh, method by which to design a park.
But I would, well, I guess, were you aware of this discussion about the fence before and was it in our original design? Was it in the original design for the park? Or was it went out to bid?
No, no, it didn't go out, no, it didn't go out to bid.
Were you aware of the need or this comment about the fence tonight before the meeting this evening?
Yes, that's, we discussed this. Yeah, we discussed this. There were, there were several items that were discussed that we, as I said, we had some really good conversations with the neighborhood about what their preferences were. So actually, we added some things into the project that weren't originally in. But we had to look at some things, some components that we could use that saving. So.
Well, I went to one of the Neighborhood Association meetings and I remember the conversation about the restroom and the hope that the bid would come in low and you might be able to do exactly what's happening now with the restroom. But I hadn't heard this comment about the fence until just now. So it's been going on and I just didn't, but I would love to know that before we design it here so that I can kind of help.
It was just one of those things that was so big of an item. And he said, let's concentrate on what we can do that either gets us the most value.
I think the mayor was on the phone wanting to speak, Mayor Neely.
So thank you. This was a long time ago, but Merrill Hirst, the Child Development Center there at Barclay Hills put up a cyclone fence. They went through the Historic Review Board and there's a lot of discussion about it. But I presume the fence is there for safety reasons and it was felt that cyclone fence was probably a safer fence for keeping people out of places that their kids, where they shouldn't be. And so Historic Review Board went ahead and approved this cyclone fence at that time. And I presume the cyclone fence has been there for some time. I don't know if ever anybody ever put it before the Historic Review Board. But that was a decision made at one time by Historic Review Board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roth?
This is a point of information. The Historic Review Board rewrote all of its policy in 2006, 2007. And so it went from one page of principle to 93 pages. So I'm sure there were some changes made in that.
Okay, so I want to get the sense of the commission whether to entertain something about this fence now or adopt a motion regarding this funding tonight and deal with the fence problem in the future.
That's, that's what I would do. I move to approve this construction contract agreement with Brampton Construction Incorporated for the Canema Neighborhood Park project in the amount of $323,650.
Second. It's moved by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Roth. May we have the roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
I'm here, Neely.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, item is item 7B. Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Adoption Process. And our staff report is from Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, new commissioners, once again. The Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was adopted by the City Commission in September of 2007. It was subsequently appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals and remanded to the city in August of 2008. As you may recall from private updates that I've given you, we worked with Metro and their staff to amend the 2040 Growth Concept Plan map of Metros to reduce the industrial area, to reflect the, reflecting the determination by the Metro Council that the region had sufficient land for industrial uses as well as to coincide and reflect the adopted Beaver Creek Concept Plan concerning the land uses within that area. So what we've, I've also included a memo from the city attorney dated May 19, 2011, outlining the general approaches that we've identified on how to address this remand. The first approach would be to keep the record closed, acknowledge the Metro amendment and adopt the existing plan. Another alternative would be to reopen the record on a limited basis, identify those limited areas and remand it back to the Planning Commission for public hearings and a recommendation back to the City Commission. Third approach would be a de novo review, including full reconsideration of the plan, meaning everything would be open for public comment and additional findings. In reviewing the options as well as the, the appeal that was brought before Luba, there were many items identified in the appeal before the Land Use Board of Appeals. And working with the city attorney, we identified four areas where we would recommend option two, where we remand the Beaver Creek Concept Plan back to the Planning Commission and address these limited items. And that would be protection of industrial lands, transportation utility and service adequacy. Primarily would be focusing on acknowledging the, the change to the title format, making additional findings to the Metro requirements for urban, for concept planning. Since we updated, since we adopted the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and the Park Place Concept Plan, we've gone through and updated our capital improvement plan for transportation as well as our system development charges, reflecting the needed transportation improvements that were identified in both of those concept plans. We'd be adding those findings plus additional findings into the record, demonstrating compliance and sufficiency of the transportation plan. And then addressing service adequacy, primarily police and fire, where the findings were, could use some additional findings from the Planning Commission and City Commission. So those are, those are kind of the general realm of options that are available from acknowledging it tonight, adopting it, or remanding it back with the record open, de novo hearing, back in front of the Planning Commission, or somewhere in the middle where we remand it back to the Planning Commission and limit what items we would be addressing on that remand. Once again, we did recommend approach number two. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, before I get to commissioners on this, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this issue? Yeah, Ms. Gracea Lindsay, come forward.
My name is Elizabeth Gracea Lindsay. Can you hear?
Yeah, please stay where you live.
I live at 21341 South Ferguson Road, Beaver Creek. I have some comments on the reports that you received from the city's attorneys. And before I made the comment, I wanted to give a little bit of background. In 2002 and 2004, Oregon City asked Metro to bring 308 acres into the urban growth boundary to provide industrial land near the Clackamas Community College. And Metro did do that and put the land onto its industrial map. The concept plan did not plan the vast majority of this newly, new land as industrial despite the city having asked for it for that purpose. Instead, it planned it as residential and commercial. And it was for that reason that Luba remanded the concept plan decision back to the city because it agreed that insufficient land was zoned industrial to comply with Metro's laws. In the reports that you have from Ed Sullivan and Kerry Rifter, on the bottom of the first page, it says, Metro's, well, the city staff asked Metro to change its industrial map last fall. And so here, and Metro did make a decision to that effect. So here in your, your report, it says, Metro's decision was not appealed and is now final. And the industrial lands map is now consistent with the designations contained in the 2007 Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. So this is suggesting that the Metro map now agrees with the concept plan map. But this is incorrect in that the decision was appealed. It's been appealed to LCDC, which is the body that acknowledges the, the work that Metro does. So this is incorrect here. And then that error is reflected also on the fourth page. You have parentheses, one parentheses, and it says, taking official note of the title for industrial lands and making findings for the protection of those lands. So this proposed approach would rely on Metro having changed the industrial designation of these lands. So not so much is needed. But as I said, that decision actually hasn't been finalized. So this approach may not be effective for that reason. I had one other concern about this report on page four. It talks about the efforts that were, that occurred in order to develop the concept plan. And it mentions the Citizen Advisory Committee and it mentions all these different citizens that participated in it. But one of the contentious points was that the Citizen Advisory Committee actually did not have citizens on it. It had one outside citizen and one inside citizen and it had several seats that never were filled. And so it was really filled up full of sort of official personnel, but not with citizens. So when it came time to have the, the open houses and the different surveys and public input, there's always a vast majority of citizens that were really unhappy with the plan. So you could get a little misled by that paragraph there. And that was part of the reason for the goal one objections that were taken to Luba.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, I think we have another speaker requesting to speak. Ms. Kuzinski?
Kristen Kuzinski, Inc. Incorporated, Clackamas County. In 2002, Oregon City went to Metro asking to bring this property into the UTV specifically for industrial jobs. It stated that you wanted land close to the college to create jobs. And you asked Metro to bring it in for these reasons. This land is pretty far from transportation and it lacks the infrastructure. On a consistent basis, businesses that have looked at this area along the candy, along with Clackamas, along with Wilsonville, continue to turn Beaver Creek down because it is simply too far out. If the city wants to pursue industrial jobs for the Beaver Creek Plan, you should wait and see if Concordia and Clackamas Community College can form an alliance, which would bring the program from Concordia to create incubator businesses. Incubator businesses provide local jobs, meaning which do not need huge transportation corridors and large infrastructure for their sustainability and profit. These businesses will help to grow our local economy. They will not clog our roads with delivery trucks, but rather will produce here locally. The whole reason to bring the Beaver Creek land into the UTV was for industrial jobs has not been successful. The city is not supposed to switch from its original intent to Metro to bring this in for industrial land. Building dense residential, as you may possibly consider, is going to glut our roads, create huge infrastructure and transportation costs. We can't really afford that. I believe this land can still be used for industrial. And I believe that you need to wait to allow your incubator businesses to grow and bring success to our community. And I want to mention lastly, what Ms. Gracea Lindsay spoke about, the goal one requirements. When I attended the meetings at the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, I gave testimony to Mayor Norris and to Larry Patterson that goal one requirements were not marked in this concept plan. I ran meeting to meeting to meeting and the citizens had no opportunity to testify or to comment. The citizens were really wanting out of these talks. I hope you consider this. Thank you.
Okay, any other citizens wishing to comment on this item? Okay, commission discussion. Any would like to begin the discussion?
May I ask you to clear the list, please?
Okay. Let's, the city attorney is asking to speak. May then may have informed the discussion and then Mayor Neely.
Thank you, Commission President. I just wanted to touch briefly on the point that Ms. Gracea Lindsay indicated that their appeal had been filed. We're certainly not aware, but we've been in contact with Metro. They indicated that no appeal has been filed. We'll go try and track it down, but I think it'd be surprising if in fact an appeal was filed and we hadn't heard about it. And, you know, so I, I really don't think an appeal has been filed. And I'll try and track down exactly what it is that, that has happened that, to, to bring that and bring that back to you.
That, oh, Mayor Neely. Mayor Martin?
Yes, I was, I was involved in that committee at the time. And the last speaker was quite correct. The, the land that the City Commission asked to be brought in was a, was a land that was intended for industrial. Then the owners of the golf course wanted to bring their land in as well and it came in. Then there was a very, very long dialogue. And what had happened was the neighbors, the Cooper League Association, were the objective of having industrial land right across from their area. So over a period of time, this discussion went on. And it was felt that the land across the way would be residential. The plans put forward by the owners of the, of the golf course actually had residential, but their, their purposes was very specific. They were planning to have houses that were in fact directed to home-based businesses. And then have a transition of other employment land, basically across from, from the high school area and then, and then have the industrial land across from the college. There was a real, real public process and tried to meet really the expectations, I think, of all of the services located within the city that were, were near this area. And I just wanted to explain what some of that history was.
Okay. Any other commissioners wish to speak? Okay. I'll come in here. I'm, I'm wondering if the best thing on this might be to continue this one meeting to allow the city attorney to confirm this issue of the appeal of the Metro industrial lands question.
I guess so. We're not taking a date certain for when the Planning Commission hearing is. We're intending to re-notice as extensively as we can whatever the commission decides if it is remanded back to the Planning Commission. So we're not requesting a date certain. All this does is identify how we're going to move forward once we decide to. If there, if there is an appeal, we're not gonna, we're not gonna move forward with the Planning Commission review. If you choose to continue it, that's, it's certainly fine. I'm not sure that it's imperative, that it's necessary. Because if there is an appeal, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna notice this and proceed with the Planning Commission till that appeal is addressed. All this is doing is providing us direction on how we're gonna proceed.
But when you mentioned an appeal, what is the decision that would be being appealed?
Well, that's, it would appear that they would have, an appeal would have needed to have been made of the Metro Council's decision to amend the 2040 map. We are unaware in our conversations with Metro in, in early May, this decision was issued in late December, early January. And there was no and there was no appeal filed of the Metro decision. We'll have to go back and look.
But there's nothing that is a land use decision tonight.
No. All we request is direction on how to proceed with trying to read the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and address the liberal remand issue.
Okay. But I got from the city attorney's memo that what we decide tonight has implications for future land use decisions and future potential appeals because the way the memo was stated, if how widely we open up this process, we would be addressing some very new questions and some very new issues. Or that if we didn't open up anything at all, are you, my sense of the memo was that maybe doing the process without opening up these issues for additional information in review could in itself lead to appeals?
I don't think so. And not opening up, you know, so we made a decision, Luba remands it, that it's pretty clear case law that in certain circumstances, you can in fact not open up the record again, you know, change, you know, make some explain your decision better, and that's not a problem. The concern is that at Luba, there's a wide variety of issues that were raised. It's a legislative decision, so there's no razor to wave it below. Inclines arguments that, you know, looking at it, maybe we want to get some additional evidences. Court end, we can make the case, but we don't have to. So the, I think what the memo was designed to do is sort of lay out three options and a variety of, you know, different, those are the three main ones of, do you wanna, are we staying in court? Is this, what the decision was made back in by the city was remanded in one relatively small issue that has been resolved with Metro's action? Do we want to just forge ahead with that and, you know, let Metro ever appeal it again? Do we want to fiddle some things where we think we can, you know, maybe make the decision a little better and deal with some things that have been brought up? Or do we want to completely throw the doors open and reconsider it, start from, you know, ground zero again are really the three options? And the decision about whether or how to do that, it isn't likely going to lead to a land use decision in and of itself. It affects what staff is going to do. It affects what the citizens are going to look at and the amount of input and the amount of work they have to do, as well as the amount of work you have to do in terms of thinking through the policy decisions.
But if in fact an appeal of the industrial lands redesignation by Metro has been filed, there's not much we can do about that, right?
I think what the planning director said, I think that's right. If there's in fact an appeal, we probably want to wait and see what, how that plays itself out before we take any further steps. It's just, I can't imagine appeal actually being filed. And we had significant discussions with Metro in May, and they specifically told us no appeal has been filed. We had been involved in the decision they could process, and we hadn't heard anything about it. So, you know, this is the first indication of any kind that there's been an appeal filed that would affect this decision. So striking me as very unlikely. But, you know, usually there's a kernel of truth somewhere in something that seems unlikely and want to dig that out and explain what it is. But I just don't see how an appeal would, that an appeal is filed.
Okay. Thank you. Generally, after having read the memo, I do see some merit in the middle ground approach that's been recommended. And the memo asks the commission whether there were some other issues that we would want to add to that limited set of issues. I have two that I want to raise. I don't know how much of a can of worms or, you know, a ton of extra work that would involve. So I just want to get some guidance from staff and the commission on this. And one of, they each, I think, would touch on broader citywide planning issues. So I want to, I just want to, I don't know if this is the form to make these suggestions. One is relates to SDCs and infrastructure. One of the things that really, really impressed me about the plan, that was part of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan that Ms. Holden had put forth with the design planning that Sarah Architects had done for them, was this concept of like onsite wastewater treatment with these techniques called living machines. You may recall, you know, from, I guess there were design charrettes that Sarah held on this. And there's a couple of issues floating around town now. For example, the water rate rollback, the sewer rate increase that Tri-Cities is putting forth. And we have these SDC methodologies. And I'm wondering if it's, I don't know if it's already in the city code, whether one, for example, get a break on SDCs. If one goes for some really, you know, first feasible and practical alternatives that don't require a heavy, you know, infrastructure investment like sewer bikes, which I imagine SDCs are for. So if something get a break, so a development could get a break on SDCs by offering an alternative for onsite wastewater treatment or rainwater harvesting or something like that, is that something appropriate to consider for a concept plan? And whether we're implementing ordinances come out of something like that? Could we do that citywide? What, where do things stand now with something like that? And would this be appropriate, like an appropriate, you know, venue to explore something like this?
The utility with system development charges, I think all three, all four of the transportation waters, sewer and stormwater all have clauses in the resolutions that adopted them that the methodology is adopted. But any applicant being charged system development charges can present alternative data for the city engineer to consider. And that's, I think, the kind of thing you would be getting at. We can't go without our utility systems. But certainly their load on those systems and how much how much they would subsequently then be charged for the demand on those systems can be assessed depending on the type of infrastructure and their demand. And it is specifically written in those resolutions that alternative data will be considered.
I don't know, what do you mean by alternative data?
It's very, it's all very, I guess, sort of legalistic talk. But there's an adopted methodology that by which we charge system development charges. And for example, for example, in the case of wastewater, it's based on equivalent dwelling units. And we've made the assumption that an equivalent dwelling unit, in other words, a single-family residence, is comprised of 2.3 residents, and that's equivalent to X cubic feet of wastewater per day. And that is the impact we have on the system. So, and that has to be conveyed in our pipes and to the wastewater treatment plant. And then there's a conveyance or a collection system development charge for the city. And then there's a treatment system development charge for the Tri-City wastewater treatment plant. And if there was a way that they could provide defensible engineering data to say that we will not be generating those flows with our development, either to your wastewater collection system or to the wastewater treatment plant, we review that and are to adjust their system development charges accordingly.
Okay, and that presentation would of course involve that in order to convince you of that, they would have to present some specific engineering method.
Exactly. And that kind of a case, because some of those technologies are still fairly new. Not, I think they're very interesting. We would probably involve DQ in those conversations as well to make sure that, you know, what if, I mean, it would take, we would do, we would consider them very seriously and look at it and be fair. So we're going to be fair with all developers, whether or not they're doing alternative type technologies or not.
I was just gonna say, you know, the one other issue that you see with infrastructure such as storm or sanitary, you know, it's difficult to account for, for example, if you're putting in green streets. You can design the swale to hold a 10-year storm event, but you still have the potential for the 100-year storm event. So in many instances, you still need to put the infrastructure in to address that overflow. So it would be, as I was explaining, we do have it in our methodology to review alternatives in consideration of system development charge reductions. So, you know, that, we just, we don't see, we don't see too many of them, especially with sanitary sewer. But it is already an option that can be made, and the city would consider today.
Great. Okay, thank you. That answers the first one. The second one related to design review. I think I recall that there are, as part of the concept plan, there are supposed to be design guidelines, standards. I'm not sure what the degree of these standards are in the concept plan as they stand now. And what mechanism are there to ensure that they're actually implemented when we build stuff? I recall this one, this one party that came in and applied in advance of the concept approval. And we approved it with the proviso that their building would meet whatever standards there are of the concept plan. But my recollection is that during that discussion, it was kind of acknowledged that we didn't have them yet.
Correct.
Okay, now, as part of what you're asking for us to move forward on that, would that be part of this process?
No, it would not.
But we could ask tonight, in the addition of what you're, you know, you gave us three or four specific issues to address, and requested whether we would want to add any. It seems that that's one we could add.
Yes.
And we did decide to do that.
I think that what it, instead of going through the adoption, the concept planning process, we had intended to write the actual zoning implementing ordinance concurrent, to implement the concept plan. Because of the additional meetings and the drawn-out nature of just adopting the concept plan itself, we ran out of funds and we ran out of time. So we created, we created transition to a two-step process. And then we started to write the code. But once the Luba appeal occurred, we stopped. So I guess I would request, because of the historic appeal that we've dealt with on this, I would be more comfortable, let's get the concept plan done. We've got the South End Concept Plan that we're going to be, that were the city year goals and policies. And the intent was then to come back and identify funding once the South End Concept Plan was completed and adopted, to then come back and write the Beaver Creek Code in 1213, if we can get through the South End Concept Plan, and put that in the budget for 1213. One, I'm running out of staff to give projects to. Writing the code for the Beaver Creek Concept Plan is going to be an extensive public process. And we're trying to get the Beaver Creek Concept Plan adopted so that we can address any appeals if they do come forward, before we spend a great deal of funds and resources writing a code that may or may not be applicable on through a deal with the appeal. So that'd be my only caution is that based on the work scope, the policies that we have and the budget that we have adopted, it wasn't the intent to write the actual implementation ordinance. It was to get through, get the concept plan adopted, and then move on to the next step, which all appeals have been addressed, if any are.
Great, thank you. Mayor Neely?
Yes. I read the comments on the last, last person's comments when you had the public coming forward referring to Concordia. When Metro was considering, this is before our lands came in, the woman was considering industrial lands. It identified lands that were originally important industrial lands. Always didn't qualify, of course. But one of the things that was put in in terms of a permitted use was creating educational institutions that basically served the needs of industrial uses. And the way I understood the program that Concordia is talking about here, that would actually fit. And perhaps when, you know, if we could just reopen the record, one of the things the planning commission might consider is whether some educational training use that was consistent with the industrial purposes could be also included. And I was just going to throw that out.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion from commissioners? I repeat my, I think my brothers on this right now would be to continue this one meeting to allow the city attorney to look into this appeal issue. But whatever is the pleasure of the commission, I can't make a motion I have learned as chair, so I will leave the motioning to my colleague.
I will.
I was saying earlier that I, there's no discussion. My tendency would be to continue this for one meeting to allow the city attorney to look into the appeal question as to whether Metro's redesignation of the industrial lands has been appealed or not. But I can't make a motion, so I'm relying on the, my fellow commissioners to decide what we want to do.
So I'm making.
Do you have a problem with that?
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Is it a motion there, Neely?
No, she can make the motion.
Is that understandable for any reason?
No. No.
Motion is to continue, right?
Yes.
There was. Let's, let's have Commissioner Roth to first state a motion on this question. If you can continue it to the date certain, July 6.
Okay. I make a motion that we continue this item and create over to July 6 to allow the city commission, or the city attorney to look into amends with Metro.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Roth and seconded by Commissioner Smith to continue item 7B, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plant Adoption Process to the next regular first commission meeting in July.
Let me just, yeah, I just got a comment. I, there's a lot of what's going on that I have breakfast in the communication, so I often haven't heard exactly what's going on.
Okay. I think we're in a, some way, some way to come up with it. I think we're in board on this one.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the road call, please.
Hi.
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 Commissioner Roth?
Hi.
I'm Mayor Neely.
Okay. Okay. I think I'm going to exercise my authority as acting and presiding chair to call a 10-minute break at this point. So we can be at 8:20. And go into our next agenda item, which is item 7C, second reading ordinance number 11. Oops, look at that. Timeout, people don't have our city attorney yet. So.
Should have looked before I left.
I've been asked to do that before. You're the city manager, can't we just have you be the city attorney too? It will save money.
But no, it won't work.
I'll talk to the.
Okay. Next item is item seven C, second reading ordinance number eleven dash one oh seven granting a telecommunications franchise to Electric Lightwave LLC to occupy certain rights of way within the city of Oregon City. Now, we've, um, we've had a discussion on this matter at the first reading. But just in case, I will first ask if there are any citizens that wish to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none, um, I will, um, ask the city attorney advice on whether I ask for a second reading first or ask for discussion first.
I think typically you can do either one. Typically, we get a, a motion to, for the first reading, second, then we have the reading, and then if there's any discussion.
But this would be a motion for the second reading.
Motion for the second reading.
Okay, let's do that. Let's, uh, entertain a motion for second reading, and then we'll have discussion. Is there a motion for the second reading?
To approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number eleven dash one zero zero seven granting a telecommunications franchise to Electric Lightwave LLC.
Second.
Okay, city attorney, please.
Ordinance number eleven dash one zero zero seven, an ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Electric Lightwave LLC to occupy certain rights of way within the city of Oregon City.
Okay, and I would just to, I, I would just like to make note to the mayor that I actually did allow the city attorney to read the second reading before. Okay. Any commission discussion on this item? Okay, let's, uh, we have the roll call, please. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Okie doke. Next item is item seven D, reallocation of budget funds, uh, for, oops, this scroll is just shut. Re, reallocation of budgeting funds for the visioning process. There's no commission report on this. I think this is something, uh, uh, it was a commission initiative, um, in the last meeting, on how we might, um, consider going about, um, reallocating funds for the visioning process. I think the, the visioning process has had pretty specific, uh, funds allocated at the urban renewal level. Um, I, very late this afternoon, sent out an email to the commission, um, which probably almost no one or no one has seen. Um, but I had, um, wanted to start a discussion, um, prior to, uh, the beginning of the fiscal year, when we're going to start spending money, on how we might, um, have a discussion about, um, allocations for the visioning process. I know the city manager had mentioned during our work session, um, the contingency funds of the city, and that you felt that, uh, there were, you were probably, um, find the funds within that to.
Well, I think that a combination of the funds you earmarked from urban renewal and our contingency, would give us enough flexibility, certainly in the next twelve months, to address whatever visioning, planning costs would come our way. So I, I don't actually think you need to address this item, uh, because I think you have enough of that. However, uh, once you refine the visioning scope, and that's really kind of one of those steps that will be important in defining the costs. Once you determine what that scope is, then you'll have a much better picture of what the cost would be. But I feel like, at this point, you've got a couple hundred thousand from urban renewal set aside, and I think you're going to be covered for the next twelve months.
Sure, um, my own.
Almost regardless of the scope, so.
My only caveat to that is, um, we had some citizens commenting, and I was quite strongly in agreement with them that, um, this should be a citywide process. And I'm not sure that, that the urban renewal funds would be able to be used for something on a citywide basis. And I think that's where your comments about the, the contingency funds, um, come into play on that.
Well, um, you're also, I think one of the items that I got, I appreciate you said it, and I did get it seventeen minutes before the executive meeting, um, which was just enough time to realize that the money that you, the commission actually has for its own use is a pretty substantial budget. And because this commission is a citywide commission, uh, we could take a portion of that and add that to the overall project, and that, given the fact also that staff is paid by the city, rather than urban renewal, for the most part, a lot of us are. Uh, I think you're going to be fine. I think you'll be able to do a citywide business if you want to do that.
Yeah, just, just to read out, um, from my, my little Excel spreadsheet, um, I had kind of identified our own budget as the first ox to go around this. We're a pretty frugal bunch. I mean, I have, I've been to one conference in the past year. And, um, after my first year, I learned the unhappy lesson that I can't even buy lunch on my city commission expense account. That just reinforces, uh, I think that, um, I don't, haven't spent any money, um, as a commissioner. And I, I, I don't know if I, I can't, I don't have the budget document with me, but I had identified from a line item called other costs, five thousand dollars, communications, twenty thousand dollars, and contract services, fifty thousand dollars, just from the city commission budget. And I'm, I'm just, it'll take me a second, I just want to do, um, because I have some questions, um, since we're in a discussion, that, that kind of surprised me. Economic development, there's a, I saw just estimated fifteen thousand that we could, um, be able to use. Community development, there is a line item in there called acquire materials, that I was just dumbfounded at the size of that. It was a couple, several hundred thousand dollars, and, um, if nothing else, having gone through this exercise, I just want to satisfy my curiosity about this acquire materials line item in the budget and license. I think a large.
And having. Yeah. What, what happens is, we have, you know, under three fifty one, which is community development, I have three funds in there, that all get grouped into, to three fifty one. That includes GIS, planning, and then, um, there's also the revenue side of that. And what you see, and, and the difficult part is that, for example, just under community development, I have about seventy five line items. Within the budget that you see, those are consolidated into five or six line items. So what I'm thinking is that I had budgeted in there, um, to do the south end concept plan, and that, uh, that construction excise tax money, as I brought in as a revenue source, is then expended under contract acquired services to pay the consultant. So there's, you know, I think I budgeted about a hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred thousand for the south end concept plan to pay the consultants. Um, I've also got under contract services, um, the city attorney's line item. Also under contract services, the transportation review, where we take in land use fees or transportation view comes a pass through to pay the consultant who does our transportation review. I have the geotech, I have, uh, natural resource overlay district review that's also contracted out. So I think what you're seeing is a combination of land use application revenues, grant revenues that are then paid out to consultances, consultants and whatnot. Off, that, that's the only line item I can think that is that large. So it includes all my contract services under that.
Actually, no, there's two separate line items. One is contract services, and there's a separate line item called acquire materials. And the acquire materials is the one that's, um, surprisingly large.
I'll, I'll have to work with Mr. Wimmer to see which line items got put under acquire materials and without knowing specifically which line items are in there.
Okay, thanks. Um, um, public works water fund, um, that was a pretty large fund too, which, so. Again, this, this adds up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so I'm not saying, you know, use all of these ones, but I mean, that was just kind of exploring like we, what we do, we're doing metro enhancement or OCCIT. Business license fund, um, the fifty thousand dollars, I do want to speak to that because I'm, I remain, very, very uncomfortable, um, with the, um, what I feel is an extraordinary amount of money for, um, a, a video promotion program that I have never been really convinced, um, um, would either cost or merit that kind of investment. And, um, this, all, all these other sources of funds, um, are internal city funds, but once the fiscal year starts, this is money that would, would, you know, would go outside of the city and be out of our control, um, once the fiscal year began. And I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it. And I do want to see if the, the commission is interested in, in, in reconsidering that and reallocating that, uh, that expenditure to Main Street Oregon City tonight, um, before the fiscal year begins. Um, similarly things that concern me, for example, we, um, we had, uh, Mr. O'Brien here, um, talking about, um, his desire that, uh, the Sin, Sinco being forced. Um, and we kind of told him that, well, no, we really can't afford to do that. And we've got a lot of funding concentrated downtown. We have an EID, we have at least two grants, both through metro enhancements, and, uh, OCCIT that are going downtown. And I'm, I just, I, I, I never saw, um, the justification for this additional fifty thousand, um, for what it was proposed to be used for. And I'd either, um, again, I can't make a motion tonight, but I'd either, I'd like the commission to consider reallocating that back to, um, either code enforcement or the contingency fund, um, before the fiscal year commences, um, and consider that for other code enforcements, which were typically un, very, very underfunded for, for the visioning process or disjunctal contingency. So, um, the last line item on this spreadsheet, I had twenty five thousand for, um, our South Fork, we're coming in from our South Fork Water Board loan, and then the citywide contingency fund for a hundred. So, um, you know, I think there's, uh, especially from the city commission and this business license fund, um, I think, um, that those are the primaries we could consider tonight as far as how to, um, um, allocate, um, money.
Commissioner Roth.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a, um, queue here, and the first one I see is, uh, Mr. Fowler.
Hello.
Mr. Fowler, you're next on the queue.
Good evening, Dan Fowler, I live here in Oregon City. Commission president and commissioners in, online. I think kind of just hearing this tonight shows exactly why we need commission reports. The first thing that's said was this didn't have a commission report. And I'm not sure if I'm sitting here in a budget meeting or a city commission meeting, or if I'm back in January, hearing an item pushed upon the public. And it kind of reminds me of a, of, of maybe good intentions that are handled in a wrong manner and that, uh, it goes awry. And the questions that I would have about the entire visioning process is what's the purpose? And then, um, we don't have a finance director here tonight because this was sent out at seventeen minutes before the executive session meeting, or at least received then. And, um, I believe that the commission, um, the commission has every right to set policy, to think of things that are necessary, important for the city, and to give staff adequate direction to come back to you with ways to implement those items. But I find it hard to, where, uh, we, we, and it's not that, uh, any of us have ideas, but to break it down, to come with a proposal, to even go so deep into it, it sounds like we're flipping into the management role rather than a policy setting role. How does the staff weigh in? Um, you had a goal setting session, I'm not sure this was one of those items on the goal setting session. We keep hearing that the plate is full. How does a vision plan fit in with a comp plan with those zone changes that might follow? How does it fit in with your renewal planning? What do we actually do with a visioning plan when it's done? What happens in the interim of a visioning plan? Does development stop? Are people in a pause? I mean, our community isn't, isn't a pause enough. It's like, I want to get something done. Uh, I just have a lot of issues with this, and I, believe me, I'm one who loves vision. But I have just so many questions about, about this. I hear, just, just tonight, I hear about two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen south end and accomplishing those, and then moving back to Beaver Creek. So I wonder when in reality, or where in reality, does the visioning fit in? And how, how long does that? There's so many questions that I would like the staff to come back to you as leaders, if you believe in the visioning portion, and give a realistic timeframe, a realistic effort to that effort, so that you know how and when to budget for it. It might be that if it's the right thing to do, that you budget for it in two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen. The city isn't going to fall apart, you know, no matter what we, what happens, we're going to, we're going to be here. So a lot of questions, um, I just don't like to process. Thank you.
Neely, listen, I'm sorry, Commissioner Roth.
Um, you know, I have a, a couple of comments. Um, one of them kind of has to hear everybody, so I'm sorry if I'm kind of repeating myself. On, uh, the, uh, number that you were talking about today, Commissioner, the fee that you sent out at four thirty, I haven't had time to analyze it. This is the way I could even possibly entertain a, a motion. The other is, we did pass the budget, so I do assume that our directors, um, of those departments have already planned for that many, um, to run their department. So we haven't really, um, given them any idea of what that impact will be for them. And, um, Mr. Springer, um, how do you feel about these, um, recommendations that Commissioner Neely has put forward?
Well, um, as I said in the opening, opening of this agenda item, I believe the commission will have enough money to do whatever visioning they might decide to do this, this fiscal year with the amount that has been set aside from, uh, the contingency and urban renewal and other contributions from the general fund, without.
Thank you. I thought that I'd heard that from you previously. And I think, didn't you also say that, um, Tony was, um, going to bring back a, uh, plan for a comp, um, or looking at the vision for the comp plan?
I believe that's on one of your future work sessions, isn't it?
Yeah. So are we not supposed to wait for that before we, um, talk about the whole visioning thing? Drawing that out there.
I could just chime in real quick. You know, ever since we started talking about south end concept plan, or looking at Blue Heron, or looking at urban renewal area, or Hilltop, or citywide, um, you know, walking out of here after the last meeting, I, I had to stop and kind of go back and listen again. Because what I didn't hear was actual consensus as to what, what are we doing? Um, you know, I heard, let's do a citywide vision, um, it, it's been long enough, things have changed. I heard, let's go back and look at our previous visions, because maybe we don't need to change that much. I guess, and in that time since last Tuesday, you know, we've been contacting other jurisdictions to see what they've done in terms of visions and how they did that, and what they cost, and what the impacts were on staff in terms of FTEs, how they were run. And what we're finding is there's, there's a lot of different options. So I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial to the commission to have a work session, give, give me a little bit of time, I need more than a week, um,
Thank you.
to put together not only different visioning options and what the results are, but to try and get what your expectations are. Is it, is it, is it really a, a citywide community driven vision? Or is it a vision with some sub area of planning in it? Because those are very, very different products, and, and they should almost be separate processes. But I want to, I, I think it'd be helpful at a work session to kind of get all the ideas out there, what the processes are, what the impacts are. out there, what the processes are, what the impacts are, and, and, and then you could, I, I feel you could probably make a little bit more informed choice, and without that, help me, and, and, because, in determining the scope. Because i- i- if we don't have community visioning, there are project impacts as well as budget impacts on the current budget that's, that's set to go in in July one. So, to, to be, you know, I, I've got my staff on hold until we get this question answered, because it does have impacts on some projects that are in, not only in your goals, but are in the work plan for, uh, eleven, twelve. So I understand that we've got general consensus about something, but I'm not sure that I'd have enough money to be able to do a skirt timeline and financial impact to actually implement something and do it, and do it well, because what do we do to want to do well? So I guess what I'm requesting is, can we have a little bit of time, get it on a work session, we can all sit down and go through this and, and have the time dedicated to it, because it's kind of been coming pretty quick and fast, and it might be helpful to get what we're finding to you guys, so you can consider it.
Thank you. Mayor Neely?
I agree with what, uh, Dan Fowler brought up, that it wasn't explicitly on our goals. We also, of course, you're beginning with Blue Heron issue, Beaver Con, uh, Concept Plan issue in one form or another, and we got the South End Concept Plan that we have to deal with. Having said that, however, uh, I think we need a work session because, and, and to look at the visioning issue, because, uh, we have passed our comprehensive plan back in, I guess it was two thousand four, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, we hadn't done anything with our current comprehensive plan up until that point for over twenty-five years, and we're supposed to revisit that within a ten-year period, and that's always been the case. And, um, I think it'd be very good to have a work session, looking at, uh, how we look at, uh, look at, uh, I should say, analyzing and perhaps you're doing our comprehensive plan, making appropriate amendments, and beat this ten-year, uh, uh, deadline that we, we failed to do for, for many, many years. And so I think this is a good opening to start that process personally. But, uh, I, I don't know we know enough about, in the visioning process to allocate monies out of our budget for that purpose. Uh, if we are going to, I would prefer perhaps look at a contingency plan first, uh, if the contingency planning first, but I think we need to do this in a very detailed way and look at it as part of, uh, reassessing our com, uh, our comprehensive plan.
Just before we move on, um, Mr. Kavaisman, is it, is it ten or five years that the comp plan has to be revisited?
It used to be easy to, to answer that question. Now, it's not as easy as it once was. I believe it's ten years, but I, I believe about an eighty-five, ninety percent confidence level on that because of the changes to periodic review over the last few years.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Roth?
Okay, I'd love to, um, talk about two issues on this, in, in that I believe that we need to look at a visioning plan of the entire city. We've, we've undergone some huge changes just very recently, and we're going to be undergoing more as Blue Heron unfolds and, um, whatever comes of that property. So I need, I think that our vision needs to unfold the entire city, not just an urban renewal district, not just downtown, not just Blue Heron, it needs to look at everything. And because of that, I am also uncomfortable with the, um, the fifty thousand that we've given to Blue Collar Creative. I, I don't see any other area of the city asking or receiving those kinds of dollars as a little group. And, um, I, they do have several other, um, methods of funding going on right now that are, that are public funding, and so I, I would really like to see that money switched over to a, an entire community visioning process rather than, I'm just using the money in one little group.
Commissioner Snell?
I agree with everyone, partly. Okay, so, yes, um, I mean, I, I really thought that the direction we were going was to have a work session and to start talking about this, and, and, um, I, I guess I, I, am concerned about, um, reallocating money for something that our city members says we have enough money for and don't really know what it is yet. I, I, so I, I am concerned about that. I think that we, um, have set aside money for this purpose, or, um, have money available for this purpose. And it's going to take the work session and a discussion to figure out what direction we're going, and it may be next year before we even start the process. And, um, you know, I think the discussion at the work session will determine how, how, um, important this is not just to us, but the community as a whole, and if it is as important as we all think it is, then it's going to be high priority for next year's goals. But I think where we're at right now in terms of the budget, where we have money available to us to, to, to follow this process as it goes forward, but we haven't even had the discussion, and so I feel very much the same way it felt like at the Urban Renewal Budget Meeting, where we don't know what we're talking about yet. Um, and so how do we, is it, is it, is it an emergency to start, um, taking money out of other funds, um, before we even know what we need? I do have, um, um, uh, I guess that's it. Um, I, I, at the budget meeting, um, you know, I felt comfortable approving the budget, um, at the time that we did, um, because, um, you know, Commissioner Roth, you, you left, um, so there was a concern at the moment, at that time, that there was one of us not here. However, it was on the agenda, we knew we were talking about it. The previous meeting, we were going to be in a situation where, um, again, two of our Commissioners weren't here, or Mayor wasn't here, even though they're on the phone. The conversation with, um, Main Street took place. I, um, I don't have a problem with, um, I don't have a problem with the Main Street, um, funding. I, I guess, um... Well, I, I, I have, I do have a small problem with it. I have, I have, I, I'm okay with, um, you know, approving the budget. I guess the thing that concerned me about Main Street was the fact that, um, I don't remember us ever committing to, for two years for fifty thousand dollars. I remember committing for one year, so, you know, even if the discussion was brought up to take that money back, I think that was a choice that we could make at any moment and, and do that. But I, I think that, um, you know, we know that this is going to be the last, um, investment in terms of, um, downtown, uh, with the Main Street program. We have basically, um, created, um, a program that is going to be self-sufficient, um, next year, and, um, I think that's a good thing. I think now we can have, now have that discussion to the broader city. So I'm comfortable with where we're at, um, and I, but I do understand the concerns with, with the fifty thousand dollars. I don't necessarily know that the fifty thousand dollars, was that, was, was that, um, the business license fund? I know it was talked about with that, but I'm not necessarily sure that that's where it came from.
Well, yeah, I... Three thirty-two's, I, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to check the document.
I, I don't...
I'd have to check the document.
I don't recall, two years.
Those business license funds go for a couple of different things, and they're dedicated...
I don't remember if it...
That's all right.
Commissioners, um, I just wanted to, for the record, note that the Public Works Water Funds I go on at fifty thousand dollars. Those contract services are, um, really earmarked in my budget, detailed down to what they're supposed to go for. And also, I would just advise that the water fund is a, um, is a fund that is supposed to be explicitly for water, providing water utility services for the city. So I, I guess at, at this point, I would ask that you look at other funds before you're looking at, um, that particular one.
Thank you. William Gifford and Karen Mori. Commission President and Commissioners, both physically and spiritually, yes, theoretically. I have a few points I wanted to make. One is, this conversation sounds much more appropriate for a work session than it does for a decision-making process of the, of the, of the commission, and it kind of surprises me, again, not just the late notice, but the appropriateness of this lengthy discussion.
I'm going to make a motion to put this on the work session.
Was the motion on board? He just made it? Oh, you're going to make that motion? Okay, I would certainly do. You made it.
I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to put this, that is, on the work session.
Should we let the public...
Yeah, I think we should.
Mr. Neely, should I continue, or, or what I'm saying at thirty seconds? And the second, and the second, uh, thought was, it seems to me, it means that the, the Finance Director ought to be here. I mean, we do have, we also have an appointed planning commission, uh, that I would think ought to be involved in this discussion, uh, perhaps a transition with the planning commission, since they're the planners. And also, there's a, is, well, I know there is, because I'm a member of both the City Budget Committee and the Urban Renewal Budget Committee, and if this is a budget reallocation thing, where does, where does the Budget Committee, uh, chime in on that at all? Is there no discussion with the Budget Committee? I assume after the, the budget has been concluded, that further budget discussions would be, I understand piecemeal that this, the commission has the discretion to move monies around, but it seems to me, so if this type of a discussion could have been held during the Budget Commission, the whole thing seems rather inappropriate at this point in time, and that's just my comment on this. Hey, Lori?
Okay, as, I am a member of the Main Street Board, have been ever since the Board was formed, I have a concern there were two references made to the Little Program. The Main Street Program is part of the National Main Street Program, part of a program authorized by the state, as well as assistance from the county. There is no third-level program. That would be very helpful to Oregon City, if someone can come up with a national third-level program, we'll work with that. Main Street is a recognized entity, there's a set of, there's assistance available, technical assistance, there's a national movement to revitalize Main Streets. Main Street's keeping facts and figures on the businesses that they've attracted, the improvements that have been made. The money that was asked for, yes, promotes Main Street, but it also promotes Oregon City as a destination for a business to relocate. We're trying to provide energy for businesses to come to Oregon City, open up here for business, hire local people, give us jobs in Oregon City. There is a benefit to the entire city from the program that Main Street has requested, and honestly, with the time and effort that's been put into it by many people, including me, Little Program was rather offensive. I also need to chime in a little bit with William here. I'm hearing questions on specific line items as to what the purpose of that line item is. You had a public budget hearing, you had a city commission hearing to address your budget. Those should have come out in the public process as the budget was being reviewed. After the budget is approved, I'm very curious as to why specific eye, line items are being questioned, that's as a chronic observer of the commission.
We're chronic?
Yes.
Okay, I, um, I, I want to chime in here, because I have, uh, some responses to some of these, um, points that I've made. One, this agenda, my recollection was asked for and called for at the work session we had on the visioning process last, last time. So I don't think this is out of the blue. I would have liked to have seen a commission report myself, um, uh, and I, I don't think, I mean, we, it's not the first time I've not had a commission report, it's probably not the last time we're going to have a commission report, but, um, my recollection, very strong recollection of, is that during the work session we had on this topic, we decided, or we, we were of a mind to have a visioning process for Oregon City. And that the rec, the review of the comp plan that we charged Mr. Complowit was, in fact, the first logical step of a futureing process is to see what you have now. So, um, I'm, um, if anybody is surprised by where we are in having this agenda item tonight, we recommend that they spend some time with the video of that work session, because I thought there was a pretty strong consensus during that meeting, uh, that we were going to, um, have a visioning process, and that was precisely why, um, um, we were going to have this, um, this, this, um, item tonight. I will also say regarding to the, the budgeting process, I, I expressed before my concern that we had one Commissioner who had just recovered from surgery, um, we had the budget item, uh, scheduled while she was here, and, um, and took, made the extraordinary step to come to the meeting while she was still recovering from surgery, and we switched around the agenda items, because there were certain people here who had to leave, um, and the meeting went very, very long, and by the time this agenda item on the budget got to, um, uh, the point of having a discussion, um, you know, and there was a public hearing on that agenda item, so it was part of the process. Commissioner Roth, having just recovered from surgery, just could not say, and I don't think we should, you know, raise that as a point, um, uh, of argument. I mean, it was just, we have everybody here, we have two of our Commissioners here by phone, um, so we are five people. Uh, I, I requested that we wait and that we continue the budget hearing till tonight, so it would have been a public process with, you know, everybody able to speak, and, and anybody can speak at a public hearing tonight or otherwise. So, um, you know, and, and, uh, the, if someone has raised the point tonight, well, why are we doing this without the Finance Director here? Well, the Finance Director's on vacation. Finance Director told us he was going on vacation, um, and, um, I, I don't think it was appropriate to rush into voting on a budget for the convenience of the financing, Finance Director's being on vacation. So I, I've been very strongly of the opinion, and I'm still tonight, that, um, kind of continuing that budget discussion, which I see this as an extension of that. Until tonight, uh, wh- when we're all here, either in presence or by telephone, is not an, is not an inappropriate thing to do, with all due respect, the continuation of discussion that's going on through the budget hearings, uh, both Urban Renewal and, and city budget committees, um, and through the public hearings, um, um, that we had. So I, 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 I'm, 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 I'm not really, uh, think that I can agree with, um, the comment that it might not be appropriate. Regarding Main Street, no one is denying that, um, Main Street serves an important role. I assume that your comment, as more, was not directed at me, because I can't read, I don't think I've made a comment about a Little Program. I know, I, I think if there was a program I was referring to, it was the fact that this particular video program, not the Main Street program, this video program, the way it's been presented, I, I don't see where, um, that it justifies the expenditure of fifty thousand dollars. So, to the extent that I perceive it as smaller in ambition, in ambition than fifty thousand or nearly fifty thousand, um, that's the discrepancy I was talking about. I'm, and, and no way any tend to spare the Main Street program. I'm in in no way intend to spare the Main Street program as a little program. I was talking about the blue collar, specific video which was presented to us as the justification for fifty thousand dollars. And I remain resolute in my opinion that, um, yes, while it may attract businesses to Oregon City, it's a question of priority, which is what I raised during the 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 specific budget hearings. Um, and I I I just, I'm I'm very uncomfortable when we have citizens. Uh, we had a code enforcement incident in my neighborhood the other day, which we're still going through. And there's been a lot of discussions on how certain programs, parks, code enforcement are just sard. And I just personally, um, I wanted to have a thorough discussion about that during evening that we approved the budget, but I felt the decision to move in second the budget was rushed. I I make no apologies, I just thought it was a very, very rushed motion in second to approve and vote to approve the budget. Um, and 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 if if people have a concern about our recapping the budget tonight, maybe that's where the origin of of why we're still in discussion um tonight is is the way that decision was taken um at our at our last regular meeting, um, where we approved the budget. So I don't think, I don't have a problem with, and I think it is appropriate, to discuss um reallocating um at least some of the money that I think there was insufficient discussion on um the evening that we voted to approve the budget. So with that, Mayor Neely.
You want to call me?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, first of all, uh, the motion, uh, I I believe I made it.
Yeah.
Uh, recognize the fact that we were essentially moving the total budget, the tax rate, and the bond of the debtors. And I think, uh, Commissioner Nocidi, President Nocidi is quite right, we did indicate that we could open these discussions on on the budget again. Uh, what we we had, however, only one item on our agenda that we're talking about, we approved the agenda, and that was the one regarding the uh uh the visioning process. And uh, and I, and I, my purpose would be to deal with that issue, and we can come back again to at any time in in this coming year in terms of allocating monies, we do that. So uh, I I guess, I I do not know somebody who's talking. Things break up, and I just don't hear things that well, uh, on on the face of the phone I've got. So I'm going to put forward the motion that the the issue of visioning process we got with in a in a study session.
Second. Okay, um, I will ask parliamentary advice again uh to the city attorney. We have a motion and a second while there are two individuals still on the queue. So do we call for the vote, or do we continue the discussion? How does it?
Um, the discussion would be on the motion that has been made. So, you know, when when there's motion made, discussion can continue on that motion unless somebody calls for the question at that point, then the, you move to the vote. But as long as there are people still wanting to participate, the fact that a motion is there just means that their testimony should be directed to the motion.
Okay. Um, with that, um, Mr. Smith is on the queue to speak to the motion.
Um, I guess in response, um, I will say that um for the Main Street program, one of our goals as a commission is economic development. Um, sign code, sign code enforcement has not been brought up in any um goal sessions in the last couple of years. We we know it's an issue in the city. It's it's fallen at the bottom of, you know, pot, um, but economic development is on the top. Um, and so, um, you know, bringing business to Oregon City, whether it's downtown or anywhere, is in Oregon City, and we need to be working on that. Uh, so I guess that's all say of that. Um, I I, so I, um, that's the reason that I'm, um, that's the reason I supported the budget the way it was. Um, and as I recall, even though Main Street was talked about at that meeting, when it came to actually voting on the budget, the only issue raised was that Commissioner Roth was going to be gone. No issue was raised about Main Street from your commission to see that at that moment. So go watch that tape.
Okay, um, Commissioner Roth.
Okay, first, I'd like to apologize to Karen. If I'm allowed to use the word little, I didn't mean to um, be a little German. Exactly. Um, and secondly, I'd like to clarify that the finance director did know that this was on the agenda for tonight. That was discussed with him at the last meeting. So um, I I don't think that that point is a valid point. Um, and in my motion, I am only asking for the fifty thousand dollars to be re-appropriated, not for a whole budget redo at this point. So that is something that I know that we can do. We can reallocate money. My um emergency in wanting to do this is, it's my belief that the funds are dispersed July first, people are going to be counting on that money July first. And if we're going to tell them no, it's better to tell them before they're putting it in their checkbook mentally and and describe this motion on table.
I'm calling for the motion.
Okay, more parliamentary procedure. The question has been called, and we still have people on the queue.
To close debate, um, the, there's, you need a, it's a motion that takes precedent over the main motion. You need two-thirds majority for the debate to be closed on the main motion. I mean, on the, you need two-thirds majority on the motion to close debate in order to move to uh the vote, if there's still people waiting to speak. So you take immediate vote now, do you want to close debate and move to the take a vote?
Okay. Um, let me first ask, before we go to that extreme, whether Commissioner Maury is willing to um withdraw her call for the question to allow the remaining folks on the queue to speak, since she's not here to be able to see that there was people still in the queue.
I was, I was, I was, I was.
That was my motion too. I I I couldn't see the queue, so I didn't know that.
Okay, so you, 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 uh, Mayor, you you said that you made the motion without being able to see that there were people still on the queue.
That was for the, that was for the specific agenda item that we were talking about actually. It had a lot of other things that were coming up, and this had specifically the the vision process, which was the agenda.
Okay.
So I think we could probably, we probably can go on the agenda item, and then you can bring up the people in the queue, most of them will talk about the visioning process, but we haven't had a session, so I should have passed it.
Okay, um, let's, let's get through this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's get through the queue. Um, uh, City Manager Fraser.
Myself and Mr. Cockle would like to get some clarification on the scope of the visioning, that's the motion, just so we might have a better chance of hitting on all cylinders at the uh at the work session. So.
So we've got a motion to to move this visioning session to a work session. At the last meeting, we had talked about a work session with a comp plan review at some larger venue where we invited multiple, multiple people. I guess my request is to give us time to work with you so that when we do expend these resources, that it that it's done not only chronologically, but in a method that makes sense and some type of a scope that's been thought out and discussed. So I'm just trying to clarify that that work session will be with the city commission at City Hall, because my my concern is that there are, there are impacts to the adopted budget, there are impacts, there are potential impacts to the budget, there are potential impacts to your current goals that you have adopted right now. Um, and I think that that would be an appropriate discussion to have with the commission in a normal work session. So I'm just trying to clarify if that is acceptable to this commission as part of this motion, rather than what I heard on Tuesday, which was, we want to do at the Pioneer Center, invite everybody and do a a comp plan review. Um, I I I'm just wondering if the sequencing, if you give me a chance, the sequencing, there may be a better way to do the sequencing, that that's more productive for everybody.
Um, I I'm I'm not opposed to that. I, you know, that's kind of a, you know, um, allow the other commissioners to 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 voice on that.
I don't know. I mean, it's the mayor who made the motion, so I don't know if he encouraged or questioned.
I heard, I heard it from him. It seems to be that anything's relevant to the vision process can be talked on a work session.
That's the city commissioner, at City Hall.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, can we um call that a, um, maybe do incorporate it back into your, into your motion?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so um, I'm the last one on the queue. Um, did anybody else um 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 have anything um to chat about before I I, got a few, few things? One, um.
You know, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Okay.
Well, I can.
All right, sure. I wanted to ask um, uh, Mr. Kabaisman another question. Um, regarding the question of the concern about funds um not being reallocated um prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, is it, would it be possible to, for someone to offer an amendment to Mayor Neely's motion um to the effect that no funds, um, no funds for the fifty thousand dollars to the Blue Collar Creative would be expended before um July first, um, at, um, I'm sorry, after, uh, as of July first, so that that funding can be part of the discussion that um Mayor Neely is talking about, uh, for further discussion of the whole question of visioning and funding of it in a work session?
Fifty thousand dollars?
This is the fifty thousand dollars that the city voted to approve as part of the budget for it's purpose, um, for promoting um the Blue Collar Creative uh video that Main Street in Oregon City um produced and wants, has has requested fifty thousand dollars of city money to publicize and disseminate as part of, as part of their Blue Collar Creative program. That was approved in the city budget um at the last city commission meeting.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question again, please.
Well, I think we were going to wait till everybody was done on the queue, and I'm still on the queue.
I know, it was really hot in here, so, so I just would like to get the motion done.
I I wanted to continue the discussion with uh with uh the mayor. Are you, are you?
I I prefer to have that as as part of a separate motion. I was trying to get this, because looking at it now, I was, that was on the agenda, uh, yeah, uh, that's a figure on the, on the agenda, and I understand the issue, uh, but I would rather have that in a separate motion.
Okay, as a post and amendment. Okay, so.
Yes.
Um, I see our city recorder has added herself to the queue.
There's an addition to the motion, and I want to ask the, the second, uh, Brock Smith, if he approves the adding.
When was the second? I mean, when was the vision?
If if you added that, um, you need to be held at City Hall with city commissioners, and you agree to that, so I was just trying to see.
Oh, yeah.
If the government calls.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think now we have a motion and a second on Mayor Neely's motion. Um, and if everybody is clear on that motion, um, why don't we call uh for the roll call on that?
Hi.
Commissioner Nocidi.
Hi.
Commissioner Roth. Commissioner Roth.
Hi.
Mayor Neely.
Hi.
Okay. Then, um, Mayor Neely um uh stressed his preference that any motion regarding a reali- reallocation of the Blue Collar Creative funding be made in a separate motion. And uh, um, on that score, um, I would ask if there is a motion on that item.
A motion for me. This is like a, because it's a different motion, that's all.
I, so whether someone wants to move um, uh, make a motion pertaining to reallocating the Main Street fifty thousand dollars um um so that it's not extended um after July first until this discussion on visioning has um been able to take place in further detail.
Okay, I will move that since we can't vote to reallocate it tonight.
Well, we can vote to reallocate it tonight. I think we can, we, I'm assuming we can, we can.
I'm looking through the local, I've never seen this question before about whether you can reallocate budgets after they've been approved, but prior to the fiscal year, I wanted to check and make sure that there's not some limitation and that talk about, and I think you can do it. I'm I'm just checking to make sure, so I I think it's.
So the question is, can you reallocate prior to the beginning of the fiscal year or after the beginning of the fiscal year?
Prior to, because you, as I understand it, the city's adopted a budget at a previous meeting and for fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and that hasn't started yet. And, you know, if there, you can certainly do it after the year started, and just seeing if there's some weird quirk in the law that says, you know, the budget process happens before the budget, and, you know, that's the final thing, and the reallocation can happen later. I don't think there is, I'm just looking at it, so let's go, I would just go ahead and proceeding it.
Sure, why not, um, why not, pending the city attorney's review of the question, why don't we move on to uh the consent agenda?
John Roth.
Hi. I move that we leave the budget out of this for tonight.
There's a motion, I believe.
Oh, there's one second.
Did, did the mayor say something?
I said there hasn't been a second, that's all.
Okay, you had to do a second.
I, I get it. Is, is, is there um appropriation on the chair seconding the motion, even though the chair cannot make a motion?
Um, let me uh switch.
I need a smarter phone. Yeah. Smarter smartphone.
Um, give me just one second here. Uh, and.
I'm going to second motion now.
Well, it, it's first motion been resolved, was, did it die for lack of a second?
No, there is a second if it's parliamentally possible.
Sure.
Uh, I apologize.
Yes, here, things still going on?
You were, were getting, you're getting this, but it's really.
We're on hold for just a moment, here.
Okay.
Good, okay. I know that's from making a motion. Not good, um. Um, a- according to the Roberts rules, Neely revised, the chair may make a, may second motion. Uh, they have the same rights as any other member of the the body.
I may second it. So for discussion purposes, I will um second um Mr. Roth.
Why don't you? Why is your order is the chair cannot second?
Wait, not what?
Uh, according to the, the Roberts Rules, Neely revised, that, that I have, um, they, the chair can second. So, Mr. Mayor, you can be threatening from making second every time when you could have done so.
Well, I think that Wes Lattman told me after I did the second that I wasn't supposed to, because I, I thought it was.
Okay, so, um, with the motion and a second, um, let's, um, hold that discussion, uh, while the city attorney is reviewing the other question and move on to the consent agenda. And, um, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, or is there a motion to remove something from the agenda?
Is the motion on the consent agenda only?
Yes, it's on the consent agenda.
You need a second?
No, no one's voting yet.
I think it's the consent agenda.
Well, we, we don't have a, a motion yet, and Mr. Mayor, we'd like to know that we adopt the consent agenda?
Oh, we adopted the consent agenda, yes.
Perfect, do we have a second? Okay.
I don't know what's going on. No, it's not.
It's removed and by Mayor Neely and seconded by Commissioner Smith to adopt the consent agenda. Can we have the roll call on the consent agenda?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Zee?
Aye.
Commissioner Rock? Commissioner Rock?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Overpass is five zero.
Okay, so, while, uh, why don't we go into communications while, uh, Combiason's researching, and start with the city manager, manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mayor Neely and I met earlier this week with Wes Linds, mayor and city manager, and discussed with them just briefly cable access among our two communities, so, after some discussion with them, they did agree to a joint work session to discuss cable access. That, that'll probably help sometime in August, so, and unless that has something, that's all I have today.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, do you have any communications tonight?
Uh, I just, I want to, to point out, I want to go through the openings on the various, uh, committees. Uh, we have silly opening for the Historic Review Board, the Kenee, Kenee Neighborhood Association member. We also have openings on the Budget Committee, the Oregon City Community Control and Trust, uh, Board, and, uh, and the Mental Enhancement Board, and, and the RIS, which is our National Resource Committee, and so we have, if I remember correctly, five, uh, called city positions, are people that live, work, or do business in the city, and two, uh, non-city members, and all those are, are open. And you can get onto the website to put out that application, or you can call our city reporter to get that application. So that would be my, uh, that, that would be mine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, any commissioners with commission reports?
I, I have one request.
Commissioner Rock?
One request, and that is, um, I was asked by a couple people for an update on the status of, of solution for the sidewalk repair on, on the trees and that stuff. We can do it another meeting, that's when I put an update on, I do it, okay.
Okay. Any other commissioners with a commission report? Commissioner Smith?
Um, just have, uh, comment, um, the, um, Oregon City, um, has actually had three of its, um, city-owned properties or biz- or, or city-owned properties or, um, buildings that have been, um, focused on either state or national lists in the last month, and, um, the one that, um, was good and bad news to all of us was the Irma Chamber House being placed on the, um, Oregon Preservation League's, um, list of, uh, top, I think it's eleven, um, endangered historic sites in Oregon. Um, then we heard that the elevator is on, um, a list of one hundred of the, um, places that matter, um, and so that's a good news thing, um, but we also made another, um, endangered list, um, national endangered list for our, our, um, end of the Oregon Trail Interpreter Center. And, um, so in this, uh, July's issue of True West Magazine, um, there's an article about Oregon Trail endangered, one of the top, um, on the trail, the top ten most endangered sites found along the Oregon Trail from Independence, Missouri to Oregon City, Oregon. And, um, so the Interpreter Center is listed on there and talks about, a little bit about the, um, financial, um, situation and the, the brief history of where we're at with that, um, which we got a little bit of heads up on, um, through, um, the heritage, through the sites that's been meeting and through the other heritage groups that have been meeting. And so we tried to counteract that, um, I guess, that negative distinction in the, in the magazine with a positive one, um, and so we all joined together, um, um, this was, um, Main Street, um, um, well, basically all the, all the sites, including the Chamber, um, and, uh, CHP, and, um, collaborated with, um, to put together an ad in the, in the magazine that goes the full column length to, um, promote Oregon City or Oregon City's historic sites and, um, and tourism, so, um, hopefully people see that in addition to, to that, um, and that's, I guess, the only other thing I would say is, um, school is out for summer, and, um, so drive safely, and, um, I also, um, on the news recently, I think it was, um, you've probably seen this on the news recently in Oregon City, but there was also, um, a program in Beaverton where they were doing, um, um, kind of, um, enhancing awareness of pedestrians and walking, uh, in the street and, um, in terms of crossing the streets, and so I think that we're also doing that too again in this week?
Next week.
Next week, um, so maybe you can mention a little bit about that, I don't, I, I don't know the details, I was reading it briefly, but it's.
We have a pedestrian grant to be, are, start, we're gonna start this date on the twenty-third, called in the water group. Um, it picked that spot because no one stops at that location, so we'll have to decoy, do the crowd block, and we'll have four officers. And it's gonna be posted, I think it might be posted now or tomorrow, for all the people, but this is where we're gonna be, and this is where we're gonna start stopping people.
I knew it was on walking, I didn't know it was twelve, but that makes a lot of difference, um, which is basically the former, um, Evidore, or the former, um, Chamber Palmer site, and so there was always, um, yeah, the Chamber moved if you didn't know that. All right, that's it.
Okay, um, any other commissioners with, uh, Commissioner Pomet, Commissioner Pomet, do you have anything? Okay, if you can record. Okay, I have a few items here, um, one, um, I'd like to ask, uh, what is scheduled for the, um, June, July work session?
Um, the only, there's nothing on the, the city commission work session, there is an urban renewal, uh, goal setting type, uh, work session scheduled for that meeting, it's called for July.
Okay, um, so does that mean we have no city commission work session?
Not work, yeah, already.
Nothing, okay, um, well.
You definitely know the work, the work session is that this time and, um, the week, on that evening, it was difficult to do both the work session for the city commission and the urban renewal.
Um, well, Commissioner Ross just raised the point, if there's no work session in July, when would this discussion of the visioning process take place? Um, I don't want, I don't think it should wait till August.
If, if I, if I might, I, I would just like to suggest maybe to make it in August, uh, you give the, uh, opportunity for the staff to perhaps put together things in terms of the comp plan and everything else.
Um, Commissioner Smith?
I thought the motion was clarified that we're just going to have the discussion with the commission and not get into, I mean, that was the question that, that Tony asked earlier was whether or not we were going to, um, have a conversation between just the commission, um, at the work session, or whether we were gonna deal with the, the comp plan and all the other topics under that, and I thought we, I think the motion was clarified that we were just doing it with the commission, so I guess we need to clarify that.
I think it was just for the commission, that's what I mean.
The question now is when?
Right.
Yeah.
I was, I was suggesting August.
I'm not comfortable waiting that long.
So are we saying that there is no, then we would not have a commission work session in July?
Correct.
Because there was nothing for it, or?
I think we recorded, I turned this on, but it was pretty big for us at that point, um, and, and there had been encouragement to have this urban renewal goal setting and just trying to work it all, all in, uh, all, all the needs and demands, it was, it was challenging.
Cause I, I remember that there was a specific date at the end of June proposed for the urban renewal goal setting, and that there were some people that had problems meeting that date. Okay, but I don't think I recall that we were solicited as to whether our normal city commission work session time would work as a urban renewal commission goal setting session. I think Commissioner Smith has another.
Um, one item that was, was, um, asked to be at a future work session was the, the tourism discussion, and by email you said, can it wait till August? I don't know that it can, I don't know the answer to that, but my, my feeling was it was a July question to be answered, and, and even, so, um, there was at least one topic that was, was proposed to be on a work session, so I don't know why that wasn't put there.
Um, I would support Commissioner Smith's, um, wanting to have a work session of the city commission in July for that topic. There are other items, I was going to propose for a work session, um, for a city commission work session. So, um, I guess my preference would be to have a city commission work session in July.
I would second that.
It's not a motion.
Bro, I think there, well, there are three of us expressing the desire to have a city commission work session in July.
I guess I don't see any reason not to unless there, there was a reason, and the only reason was there wasn't an agenda item, which there's two. Well, I, I, it's on our calendars, might as well use it.
I think, yeah, I do, yeah, as far as just trying to work in all the needs.
Right.
If, if you want to postpone the goal setting for the urban renewal, we can, we can do that, um, if not, we can go back to somewhere and look at it again and try to find an evening that would work for, um, both of those needs.
I think, um, as a matter of policy, I'm uncomfortable with, um, staff taking days that are always regularly scheduled work sessions and, and supplanting that with something that's not city commission business, um, especially without checking in with us first, um, so I'm, I'm, I concur with Commissioner Smith and Mr. Rock that we should have a work session on the twelfth. Mr. Fraier?
Commission want that work session on the twelfth to replace the plans for the goal setting segment with the urban renewal commission, or is it okay to see if there's a separate date for the urban renewal commission?
Um, what I would propose is this, typically our urban renewal commission meetings, well, let me step back, how much time is envisioned for the goal setting session for urban renewal? So doing that on the same day as a city commission meeting, um, would be a challenge. And we cannot, we were unable to find, um, a date at the end of June for the urban renewal goal setting session. Kind of a cluster and loss right here.
Is there an urban renewal meeting scheduled for July sixth? Okay.
You mean a, a regular, a regular urban renewal commission meeting?
Yes.
We're bringing, we're bringing the code, and that is going, be like, is gonna be a session.
That's July sixth.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, how does the commission feel about a work session, uh, the week after the second meeting in July? For a city commission work session? Mr. Commissioner, did you hear that? Okay, given the scheduling difficulties here, whether the commission would be opposed to a city commission work session the week after our second city commission meeting in July?
Do you have to have July twenty-seven?
Twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh?
I don't have my calendar, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, um, can we get back to your?
Mr. Mayor, you have impact that night, I believe.
And I know I have.
Number that night?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in California.
You're late, it's a long month.
We got about a Tuesday or Wednesday.
Wednes- we're, we're talking Wednesday to twenty-seventh. No, I was, well.
I was talking to twenty-sixth.
I was actually, I didn't express myself while I was taking the, the Tuesday because we typically have work sessions on Tuesdays.
Uh, we, we can, we can look at the calendar, um, and if this is a busy room, if it's taken that night to other orders, we can move to another location, uh, for how it's a possibility. But I, I would just suggest that, um, I think, I think we understand what you're trying to do here, you know, what you're trying to schedule, and, um, I would suggest we just take it back to our office tomorrow and look at the calendar and send something out to you, how we've been, um, trying to work out. It sounds fair when you don't have your calendars in front of you.
Thank you, Nancy.
I have mine, I'll be in Alaska.
I'll be in California.
In that, in that last week of July?
I understand you're trying to schedule the urban renewal goal setting and also on, on an unknown date at this time, and then also the work session on itself as usual.
Well, I'd like to clarify that, because we do need to try to, we have consultants and other people to try to get there to that urban renewal work session. So I wanna, are you, is the direction, go try to find a date for a council, a commission, City Commission work session?
In July, sometime.
But not, you're not given any direction on the 12th.
I mean, we've waited so long for this.
Nancy, we're not gonna change that, but we are gonna look for...
You know, the work session on August 9th is not that, oh, compared to the end of July. Just a comment.
I understand that, but I was anticipating being able to suggest items for a work session in July, and concerned about that. So I would like to leave it at that, we will hold the urban renewal work session for the 12th of July, but attempt to find the date for a City Commission work session in July. Is, is, is the, is the urban renewal, the, the urban renewal work session, is that, is that on a Wednesday?
It'd be on the Sunday.
This is, it's on a Tuesday? Okay, so I guess that's where we'll, that we will retain the urban renewal goal setting session on that Tuesday and try to, try to see if we can find a day in July for a work session for the City Commission. Okay, let's go back and... Oh, actually, while we're still in Commissioner comment, I did want to raise the issue I had of Amtrak. Very briefly, I have been exchanging emails with Amtrak and David Blair Assistant Senator Wyden as a follow-up to the luncheon we had a couple weeks ago, in which Amtrak was a, a topic of discussion. And I had raised during that luncheon the possibility of drafting a letter to Amtrak to try to get the Coast Starlight to stop in Oregon City. The train from LA to Seattle doesn't stop here. And I would like to get the permission of the, or authorization of the Commission to draft a letter to that effect for review, under the Mayor's signature. And if, it's something I'm quite interested in and excited about, and if I can get the go handle, I'll draft that for, for the Commission's review. Can I take silence as consent?
I, I mean, I guess, I think it's a great idea, but right now we have an Amtrak staff with an Amtrak station. And I thought you were putting that as part of the potential rapid rail process that we come forward.
Now, this, this, this would be, like, an interim before that. We have, we have a station we've invested, there is a long-distance rail route, the Coast Starlight that comes from Seattle to, to Los Angeles, that doesn't stop in Oregon City.
No, I see what you're talking about.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and draft that letter. Okay, so, Mr. Supervisor, any progress on your legal research?
Uh, the, there's, I see no provision on, on transferring the funds, so.
Okay, so I think then we have a motion pending on the floor to transfer fifty thousand dollars allocated to the Blue Collar Creative Video Project in the budget to the proposed visiting process for Oregon City. Actually, it might be, I mean, since we're gonna have a discussion on this, I'm wondering if it might be at this point better, rather than to dedicate it to the visiting process, just to reserve it as, as, for right now. And if, if you make that motion, I'll second.
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll make that second, okay. So the, so the motion is by Commissioner Roth to transfer the fifty thousand dedicated to the Blue Collar Creative Video Project in the current budget for fiscal year 2011, 2012, to the contingency funds of the city budget, so that we can discuss transferring it at a later point to the citywide visiting process.
I need to hear that motion again.
What the motion is, that Commissioner Roth, and which I've seconded, is to take the fifty thousand dollars currently allocated in the adopted fiscal year 2011, 2012 budget and transfer it back to contingency with the, into the city budget in the contingency, so that we can consider whether we want to reallocate that money at a future date to the visiting process as we move forward on that project. Okay, so with that, why don't we have the roll call?
Thank you, Commissioner.
This, this discussion point before we go.
Yeah.
I thought at one point the motion was on the fact that that decision wasn't gonna be made until later, and the money would not be, the money would not be used for that purpose until we had a chance to discuss it.
That's exactly, that's exactly the way it is now. What we're doing is just taking the money back into contingency, and then at a future time, it could be reallocated to the visiting process or to Main Street again, if, if after the work.
And then use it for the visiting process, that's what the...
No, no, we amended it. No, no, we amended it.
Didn't say all anything.
No, no, we amended it to put it back into contingency for now.
That's how the motion you read to me was, you said, and reallocate it back to the visiting process.
No, and then we amended it, you might not have heard the amended, we amended it to just put it back into contingency. Pending the discussion at the work session on visioning.
Okay. It's pretty clear what the intent is, though.
Of course. Of course. So, we have the roll call, please.
No.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
No.
Motion fails. Okay, so, Mr. Paul, you have something to add?
Not now.
So I think we've gotten through the agenda, if anything else, unless anybody has anything else they would like to add tonight, we are adjourned.